Who's on to represent South Hills comments?
Amy Bobardieri again, from Dan Stokosa.
Hello, Amy, again. Again, you're a little bit soft. If you can speak up.
This is Amy Bobardieri from Dan Stokosa.
Okay.
Is it better?
Yep, that's a little better.
So, this parcel is currently zoned R-20. We're proposing to change the zoning to RM for multifamily use. Oh, sorry, I didn't realize my screen wasn't being shared.
Go ahead.
So, the proposal is to construct two multifamily units, both two stories, for a total of 25 units. 12 two-bedroom units in Building 1 and 13 two-bedroom units in Building 2. The proposed access is off of Route 9D. It's central water and central sewer. There was question about a wetland in the center of the parcel. That's been... That's been proven to not be a wetland. I think Carol Knapp was out there with our wetland delineator this week. And I think that that's now considered not a wetland. So... Parcels are... Or the parcel is... Once... If it is rezoned, then it will be suitable for multifamily units. We are proposing infiltration for drainage. The water and sewer are both central. The water we're connecting to a main on Route 9D. And the sewer is on an easement to the north of the property.
All right.
And we're just looking for secret circulation and setting a public hearing.
Okay. Thanks, Amy. Go to Kristen.
Yep, thank you again, Amy, for that overview. The staff has a number of comments about the site. But yes, I would like to point out that we did get Carol Knapp to go out to the site. That is the town's wetland consultant to take a walk, to confirm and verify the results and findings provided by the applicant's wetland consultant. And Carol, I believe, has called in this evening. If there are specific questions, she is the subject matter expert. So, I would defer to her if the board has any comments or questions that they'd like to ask her about her findings. But there is a memo now, a part of the record, that she provided as a result of her walk on the site. So, the application has already gone to the town board, who has now referred it to the planning board. It started at the town board because the town board ultimately is who makes the decision about the rezoning for this particular application. And they are seeking an advisory report essentially from the planning department... Or, I'm sorry, Planning Board regarding the application. So, at this point in time, the planning board will just be reviewing the application. Will be looking to hold a public hearing in the future, which I would like to point out, if there are specific comments about the project, it is best to wait until the application is... Has an open public hearing. By doing so, your comments, written or verbal, become a part of an official findings and review record. So, I just wanted to point that out for anyone who might be on the line and wishing to comment at a future meeting. You know, we will be posting this on the website. And feel free to always contact the planning department if you have questions, comments, concerns about getting that information. So, staff is recommending this evening, based on the findings of Carol Knapp regarding the wetland, that the board adopt a secret lead agency intent resolution to begin the seeker process. And also deferring action with comments pending establishment of a lead agency.
Okay. Thanks, Kristen. All right, let's... Let me go to Carol, if you're on, to just make that comment on what you found with the wetland.
Yes, I was out at the site yesterday, having concerns, as Kristen, with the fact that the site had contained a wetland, according to the NWI maps and the DEC, the Duchess County Parcel Viewer. So, I walked that site, in particular, that area, and concur that the soils... Wetlands need soils, hydrology, and vegetation. The soils did not have the required criteria for hydro soils. And additionally, most of the species out there in that area of concern, it's not a dominant wetland vegetation. But those that are out there are considered invasive species by New York and a number of other states. So, I don't have any concerns regarding wetlands in that area. And there are no other wetlands on the site.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carol, for researching that.
No problem.
This is on for lead agencies. Let's go around the board for comments. Don? Sorry. Sorry, Don. What say you?
All right, I don't... We have a lot of comments, but a lot of them are detailed comments. Probably are the only one that'll cause some, you know, the applicant to take some time to swip. We just haven't seen one of those yet.
Yeah, there's definitely steep slopes and things behind there, et cetera, so...
Yep.
Okay. Mark, you took a look at the parking and traffic concerns?
Yeah, so, we looked over the plans. We had a few site plan-related comments, but one of whom of the more substantive comments would be the site distance at the driveway location, showing if there's any signs being proposed. Want to make sure that the site distance is not obscured. There's also the site plan item being just if we want to... If the board wants to have sidewalk along the frontage. Also, looking at the turning maneuverability of a garbage truck to access the refuge and exit the site. And then, the fire department should weigh in on some of the aspects of the fire access. But they will have to go and obtain a DOT permit when they get to the point in the application.
Okay. It is a steep road. All right, thanks, Mark.
And Carl, I apologize for jumping in one more time. The Duchess County planning actually did provide comments that came in hot off the press this afternoon. So, the board should take a look at those. And obviously, you will have them as part of the review record and can review them at when you have the moment and incorporate those in your future comment and review.
Thanks, Kristen. Yes, Duchess County has quite a few comments on it. So, Amy, take a look at those as well. And the board members will look at them as well. Now, we'll go around the board for comments. Let me start with Peter.
I just have one comment at this point, really. And that is, I'm looking at Building Number 1. It's 142 feet long. And I'm looking at the rear elevation, which would be facing the Chanticleer townhouses. And just forewarned as forearm. You know, we just generally don't accept, in terms of architecture, that type of warehouse approach. So, I would suggest that you talk to your architect and come up with some way to break up that building. Because you don't want to impose it on those neighbors. The same thing with the left side elevation. You know, really don't find... We don't like to see warehouse ends on buildings. So, want to see some windows or some architectural work there to clean that up. And that's all I have.
Hey, thanks, Peter.
Thanks, Peter. We... There was also a comment on having access from the rear of the building. So, we are going to rework these buildings.
Yeah, it looks... It's pretty bad.
I'll pass it along.
All right, Ben, anything?
Just 25 units in that space is okay. Not too dense, not too much. Hello?
All right.
Somebody?
What was your question, Ben?
25 units in two buildings. And that size space, size lot. Does that meet the density code? It's not too much?
Yeah, Ben, there was a density calculation that was provided on the first sheet. And it does work out to be, based on their calculation. It's a... And we will confirm this, of course. And I believe engineering might have already in their review. But it worked out to be 25.5. So, they're going with the absolute max number, which is why staff is asking the applicant to take a look at the proposed number. And perhaps it needs to be reduced to a size and scale that makes more sense for this particular area they're looking to look to develop.
Good.
And also, the board should keep in mind that this part of what the board is looking at is whether rezoning this property is appropriate, rezoning to an RM. So, that will also be part of the board's consideration.
Thank you, Lisa.
Can I ask one more question, Carl?
Yep, go ahead, Peter.
Now, I looked at that site. It's a fairly level site. Doesn't really... I mean, on the... Would be the west, the east side. When you looked at this site, had you looked at putting more buildings on instead of just putting in those two long buildings? Those Algonquin-type of buildings?
So, yeah, we had actually reconfigured this as a comment from the town board. Because at the time, we were under the discussion on whether the wetland in the center of the parcel actually existed. So, this was to minimize impact towards the wetland. And also, the homes that are here, the intent was to keep the buildings more to the north and away from the adjacent homes. So, that was... This configuration is based on input from the town board.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, so, the majority of those homes will have... Still have woods in their backyard from that. There's a couple, though, that we need to look at buffering. All right. Nicole, any questions?
Where's the storage... Snow storage on here?
It would most likely be to the south of this turnaround here.
Okay.
So, it could just be pushed off next to the refuse enclosure.
Okay. And that's grass over there, past that point?
Right now... I think we're proposing shade trees, but there'll be space to push it onto the lawn area.
Okay.
Minimize the clearing as much as possible. So, if we have to remove existing trees to provide snow storage area, we would then seed it and make it lawn.
Okay. Now, do you... Are you guys proposing any type of rec area for this project?
Not at the moment, but we're not opposed to it.
Yeah, that would probably be a good idea.
Okay.
Some... Yeah, some amenity for 25 units.
Yeah, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Nicole.
Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah, just one question on the entrance and exit from the complexes on 9D. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
So, is there any thought about, you know, a turn lane coming in? Or... I mean, have you looked at the traffic implications of that? Whether something is needed?
A turn lane on 9D coming into the parcel?
Yeah.
So, that... That's a DOT highway, so we would...
So, you're not that far yet? You're not that far along?
Right, we're not that far.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
All right, thanks, Bob. And Joan?
Yeah, I guess I have concerns about the density of it in this area. And I have concerns about changing the zoning, given, you know, the surrounding area. But I guess we'll see how the project evolves and continue to review.
I should have mentioned this, but the zoning district immediately to the north is RM. So, it would just be an extension of that district, one parcel south.
I don't... You mean the one with the town, the condos on it?
Correct.
Yep.
But what about the neighbors to the south and to the west?
So, that... They are R-20 also, to the south. To the west... To the west, there's a substantial hill. I don't even know that they would see the buildings.
Right.
That's like a 30-foot grade change.
So, with that substantial grade change, does that limit where you can really place your structures on the property?
We need to keep them to the east. But for the most part, the eastern portion of the property is flat.
Yeah, you see all the steep slopes.
Grade doesn't start to change until basically in line with where our proposed driveway is.
Yeah.
So, basically, everything to the left of the shaded area, we got... We would be... We'd have to stay away from.
Yeah. Okay.
There is a significant increase in elevation. When you get back toward the rear... So, these buildings are before that increase in elevation?
Yeah, so, the shaded area is basically where the increase begins.
Okay.
Extremely steep rate in here.
Yeah. Yep.
But the shaded area is grades over 25%. Up until that point, though, it's flat.
Yep.
Right, so, those steep areas come out of the calculation for the amount of allowable units, right?
Correct, so, yes, that's a... That's part of the density calculation.
All right, thanks. Anything else, Joan?
No, nothing else.
All right, I think you're getting a sense that it seems like it's a lot and a lot of units for this lot. And I guess my question is, are they all two bedrooms? That's what it looks like?
They are, yes.
Okay.
In Building 1, which is this building here, the Northern Remorse, Building is... There's 12 units. And in Building 2, there's 13.
Curious how you get the 13th unit into that. There's four plans. But...
Well, you have the floor plans.
I see the one for... Floor plan for Building 1 I have, but not for Building 2. All right, you can provide that. The other question I had was the tree buffer. The most... You know, the house that'd be the closest to you. I see in your landscape plan, you have some landscaping in that, in there. But I want to confirm whether you're trying to keep... There's a lot of trees along that property line right now. So, want to make sure, do you try to keep some of those? Right, yeah, right along that property line?
Yeah, we always try to limit the amount of clearing we have to do. If we don't have to do any structures or drainage in here, there would be no reason to clear it.
I guess I'm not sure how many of the trees I see just driving on Route 9D is... Are on the neighbor's lot themselves or on your lot. Keep in mind, we want to preserve as much as possible of the natural buffer.
And to that end, I think you raise a good point, too. Amy, on a future submittal, can we just make sure that we identify the home location on the adjacent parcels? I think it's really important for the board to be able to see that.
Yeah, that would be great.
And Carl, keep in mind that those are deciduous trees. And that in the winter, you know, when they leaf out, there's not going to be any buffer whatsoever, unless some is provided.
We are proposing coniferous trees. Kristen, did you say the home locations?
Yeah, just usually, we'll have folks just do like the building envelope of the existing.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, Peter. Yep, but at least nine months out of the year, they got some protection here as well. Additional landscaping will be needed.
Well, it might be worth identifying which of the trees that exist there now are kind of the larger trees and worth preserving. And maybe filling in with the other plantings in a little more detail.
Yep, good suggestion, Mike. And I also agree with the... One of the county's comments to consider sidewalk along the frontage there. Because I see a lot of pedestrians walking to and from the South Hills Mall. I often see pedestrians walking along the shoulder of the road there. So, the town... You know, the sidewalk ends at the village line right now. But it would behoove the town to continue that at some point, I believe. And this would be a good seed to that.
Oh, Carol is trying to...
Go ahead, Carol.
Just in the area of the wetlands, which is just south of basically the development through the area that says 6.51 acres, there's... It's very sparse vegetation. There are a number of substantial black walnuts in there, but not much else. So, if we're worried about screening and what is there now, it might not be a bad idea to just have a survey done in that area to determine which ones are going to remain, which ones are going to provide what kind of screening. And then, you can better determine what kind of screening you do need. Because in the area where she's looking at right now, the little hands, it's very sparsely vegetated.
Okay. Yeah, it is. Yep, just looking at the... Review myself now. It'd be good to identify the large trees that would be to remain there. Thanks, Carol.
The reason we're pushing everything to the north, though, is so that we don't disturb anything beyond here. So, if we provide screening... So, this is the area, Carol, that you're talking about, that you would want the survey of the trees? Because we're not disturbing anything there.
No, 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 just that area, there are very, very few trees, truly. It's quite open.
Yeah, there's a whole...
So, if you really want to know how much screening is going to exist along the back property line, it might not be a bad idea to just go through and have a tree survey done just along the back property line of those and a little bit deeper. Because it's... There's really... There's not a lot. And if we're worried, and they're all deciduous.
They're all deciduous. I don't know if there's any... I mean, except for the house, the one or two houses on the north end there, I think, that needs the most protection.
I don't think we need to survey the entire property.
Right.
You know, I think around the...
No, no, not at all.
The areas that are being disturbed, possibly. But the front part of the property, it's not going to be disturbed at all. Unless I'm misunderstanding you.
No, you're right.
No, I'm just... There... No, there's no disturbance there. But the fact is, there are very, very few trees in that area.
Yeah, and to that end, we're looking to rezone this. So, I think it's important to understand what the visual impact could possibly be on the single-family homes on Route 9D, right? So, any visual assessment supplement that you can provide to your submittal next time around would be to the board's benefit for understanding what that's going to look like to those existing neighbors.
All right, so, I don't misunderstand, Amy. You're not going to disturb any of that part of the parcel.
So, in here, we would only disturb what we need to do for construction.
Right.
We're not proposing any drainage in this area. There would be no reason to clear cut. Same thing with this area here.
Right.
So, what would the impact be on the neighboring properties? If you're not going to do any disturbance?
We are proposing coniferous trees along this area as well.
Right. Yeah. I just don't see the need for a tree survey, is all I'm saying. If you're not going to disturb any of that part of the parcel.
Yeah, but I think that the point being that we're going to intensify the use here if they're going to change the zoning. So, I think it is fair to get a sense of, well, what do they see now? What will they see with a zoning change with multifamily units there? So, I think it's... I think it's a fair ask.
I mean, I think as Mike suggested, that, you know, survey the trees along the property line where it's adjacent to the houses. But you don't have to... You know, but there's a lot of infill trees that won't be disturbed on the southern portion of the lot there.
Yeah, I would agree, along the line.
And on the north side as well, where it abuts with Chanticleer.
Right.
So, I think...
Otherwise, it's really overkill.
Surveying existing trees there and what'll happen to them is, I think, what we want to know.
Okay.
And take a look at the county's comments, as I said. And that's all I have. Anything additional from anyone? All right, I guess we're ready for a motion.
I move that the planning board declare its intent to be lead agency to coordinate the environmental review of the proposed project as an unlisted action and authorize the planning department's circulation with the notice of said intent dated July 16, 2020, a copy of the EAF and a copy of the application that identified involved agencies.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. Call it the question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero.
I move that the planning board defer further action on this application pending establishment of lead agency and direct the applicant to respond to the comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included and uploaded to the following, 1 through 11.
Second.
Moved and seconded to defer pending lead agency. Call it the question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. All right. You've got our comments, Amy, and you've heard from some neighbors. So, move forward from here.
Have a good night.
Next up is architectural review of Eastdale Village, Building Number A2. Still out there?
Still out here. Should be joined here momentarily by Giovanni Palladino. But let me... Oh, you're here, okay, good. Let me share my screen. And then, Giovanni can walk you through some of the architecture here for this building. I guess first, in terms of the site plan. The building we're talking about is Building A2. This is on, you can see, Route 44 here, across the bottom of your screen, Eastdale Avenue North, going up and down. Building A1, you previously reviewed, that was Rossi's Deli. And A2 is attached to it. They have a... They share a party wall between the two of them. And so, we've spent some time working on the architecture to make sure they're... You know, like the rest of Eastdale Village, they're compatible. And I will turn it over to Giovanni to take you through it here. So, I just... Again, just to get him started. This is the D-mark line between the two buildings. You can see the difference in the elevations between the two Rossi's here on the left and Building A2 on the right.
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, so, you can... The rendering to show both the Rossi's building and the A2 building. And what we're doing here, the big move, is really continuing the architectural vernacular of Rossi's and carrying it forward to the adjacent property with the differences that we've extended the plate height on the second floor to be taller so that it sort of helps hold that end, considering it's up and against an alley. But also, because we felt that if it was too lineal and became the same height, that it would get lost with the Rossi's building itself. So, the style, you know, I consider Italianate with the bracketed eaves. And the plate height, the reason why the windows are so tall, it's actually a single... A two-bedroom... And the plate height, the reason why the windows are so tall, it's actually a single, a two-bedroom, single-use apartment up there with, with large 12-foot ceilings to make it feel more like a loft, of a loft, but that repetitive storefront continues across. And we've combined the, the two entrances for the second floor adjacent to one another where it's attaching to the adjacent property line.
Right, these are the residential, this, this, this door, we see above Rossi's, and this door above Building A2.
Right, Jeff. Between, between the alley, let's show the other elevation. You can see that, that, that architecture continues along the alley on the bottom elevation there and then wraps around the backside so that, that architecture in essence is, is the full three sides of the building. The materials that we're looking to use, we're looking for a nickelback gap siding on the lower level, which is similar to a, a Dutch lap, also made by Hardy, which is that cementation siding that we've been using the upper floor, using a Hardy lap siding with a five, five and a half inch exposure with white, Arctic White. And then the panels on the storefront itself would be painted. Still a Hardy product, but it would be...
All right. Is that residential above Rossi's as well?
Yes.
So is that more than one unit up there or is that a whole?
Single unit, two-bedroom, single unit.
Single, larger unit, okay.
I'm sorry, you were asking me above Rossi's or above the...
Above Rossi's, oh, above Rossi's.
Rossi's, Rossi's is three apartments.
Three apartments, okay, with that single access door, single access door from the bottom?
Correct, correct, there are two, one small apartment and two, two-bedroom apartments. I think it's one, one and two twos.
Okay, thanks. This is for architecture. What about HVAC units? How, are they on the roof for this stuff? We want to make sure they're hidden.
Actually, the, the, the unit for the, the retail, it's a, it's a, it's a packaged unit, so the condenser is part of the actual air handler itself. So the only thing that is small over in the sign bed on the backside of the building. The units upstairs is being spec for, right now, we're currently looking at these heat pump mini splits that has a small, small condenser that'll probably be somewhere up on the roof. They're, they're small, maybe 30 inches wide by 36 to 40 inches tall and about 12 inches deep. They look like little suitcases.
All right, just want to make sure that the parapet or whatever hides.
Yep.
Any comments from other board members? It's an open session here for architectural review.
I can't wait for the affettati.
Yeah.
I just want to say one thing, this is Benedetto Paganelle Giovanni. And I can't believe Giovanni Palladini to do the architecture next to Rossi's.
Well, it was intentional, they said they wanted an Italian guy, so they got one.
Great, it looks great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it looks nice.
All right. I move that we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, call it the question. All's in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero. Myself, aye, myself.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And I assume starting with Building A3, you'll continue a similar style?
Actually, we're working on that right now. So yes, it's gonna, it's gonna play between A2 and the other B building that we were in previously. So it's within that architecture style.
It's all works together.
Yeah, when I come in for that building, what we're going to do is we're going to show you a streetscape that shows all three buildings so that you can see them all in line as a final...
Sounds great.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Good luck.
Thank you. Thanks.
Next, architecture is Hudson Heritage Building B for Burger King.
Good afternoon, folks. This is Mark Schulman with Design Development.
Mark, can you get a little closer to your microphone? It's just a little hard to hear you.
Yeah, sorry about that.
That's all right.
Mark Schulman with Design Development. And we are here on behalf of Burger King.
Yeah, that was better.
So I'm going to share my screen.
All right. Big improvement, by the way, thanks.
Okay, all right, good. All right, can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. All right, so, all right, so I think we have received comments. I don't know if it's worthwhile going through the whole presentation or just to respond to comments. I know this has been going on for quite some time, so I'll leave that up to you. But I can take maybe a quick, a brief overview.
Yeah, take it briefly, so we can see the renderings.
All right, so Building B, so Burger King is occupying Building B here, which is a freestanding building. So as you, as you approach Winslow Gate Road, it will be the first building you see on the right as you come into the south entrance here in this location. Page here. And here is a larger plan showing the building. There is a drive-through being proposed. There is a refuse container in this location, some snow storage. All of this was all part of the amended site plan approval. And I believe that all the square footages now have been resolved. And we're talking strictly about architecture at this point. With the, there was a previous presentation made, and I know that the primary comments is that it was a little bit too, a little too corporate, not enough Poughkeepsie and certainly not enough Hudson Heritage. So we came in as we were the author of the, the design guidelines to help them bring this building into the context of, of the balance of the site. So I think, so we've got the, kind of the cat elevations, but I think what I would like to do is just, and I'm happy to come back to these if need be, but just to go to the, these renderings.
Yeah, there you go.
And so essentially, we've done, we've done several things here. One is that we brought the materials that we're using everywhere else on the retail, the red brick that ties in with all of the historic buildings and a lot of this stone. And again, it ties into all the granite you see around, in particular with Marist College. Again, we've got the stone base and we've used the stone to break up the red brick and some of these, some of these elements. We're bringing some of the horizontal lines, again, to break up the facade. Again, we're utilizing that throughout. And we, we're stepping the roof so we don't have a, you know, we've got a little bit more articulation and interest in that, that roof line. And here at one of the entrances, the main entrance, we've actually created a little bit of a, of a tower configuration. Let me take you through the other perspectives.
Yep.
So again, this is, this is the second entrance location. There's a patio out here in front. We've got some canopies with tiebacks, a canopy with some signage with Burger King's tagline. And we've got a handful of graphics that we've utilized to help break up some of these blank facades. Take you around the, the other side, this is another view of that same entrance from a slightly different perspective. I know that some of the comments we received had to do with how do you break up these facades? Everybody would prefer doors and windows and so would we. But these buildings get a little bit complicated as they, they really have four sides. And somewhere in this building, you've got to locate a kitchen, some backup house space. And it's just not possible to put windows and doors, which is why we're proposing these, these graphics. And in some cases, based on the presentation we made last month for the, the other buildings, we're looking at both opportunities for tenants to provide lifestyle imagery. And we can also incorporate artwork as maybe a, an overall art program that may be implemented here in the project. I think there's opportunities for that. But I certainly think that tenants should have first crack at any of the graphics or signage here for their lifestyle imagery. And we've got, we're showing something here. It does say Whopper, and I think there's a, another conversation to be had about that in a moment. This is the drive-through side and the backside at the elevation. And again, all, you know, there's a lot of kitchen and backup house here, can't get windows here, but we can get some graphics and we can get some gooseneck lamps. And again, unlike the previous submission, we're trying to break these facades up both vertically and horizontally and have those parapets step and provide some articulation. So a brief overview on the, on the, on the signs. So I know that there is not yet a sign ordinance put into place. But with that said, I just, for, for, so that you have some familiarity with this, these are some of the signs that are coming in. And again, because we have a drive-through, we have various drive-through components that are prototypical to a lot of these national chains. So clearance, clearance bars, menu boards, and furniture. And I don't think I need to get too much into the furniture. So that is the brief overview. And I can talk specific to, actually, let me take us a little bit further down because I know there are also comments related to the trash enclosure. And I think the primary comment, one, how does, you know, how does, actually, that is the wrong... Okay. There is no sign being proposed now on the, the trash enclosure. I apologize, I don't have the right version of this up. But I know that that was one of the comments, we don't need additional signage on the trash enclosures. So that has been removed. I think it's been removed on the package that you've received.
Okay, great. Yeah, it wasn't really shown on the package we had, so...
It is shown in the package you have?
It wasn't shown one way or the other, so I wasn't sure.
Okay.
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was, okay.
It was, right.
It is shown, okay, okay. So I guess that was one of the comments, we don't need signs and, on those enclosures. So we agree, well, that's something we'll eliminate. So let me just briefly go through the comments we received. So we've got a, a, we've got a letter dated July 7th from Eric Holman, the planner. The applicant should discuss how the design ties into, well, actually, just the first thing here is relative to the, the trash enclosure and some of the revised guidelines. So this trash enclosure, again, it's the same red brick. It's, it's actually a field stone that we're taking from the site and we're using the same horizontal banding on the bottom and on top. And one of the comments is that we don't need the sign, so we're proposing to eliminate this sign here.
All right, let's see.
Okay. Again, I think I went through some of the other issues relative to how the building ties back into some of the historic components of the, of the, of the site. There was a question about a monument sign, which is not actually a monument sign. It's on the site plan. It's not as part of this architectural package or even signage package, but I just wanted to bring clarification to it.
Yeah, number two there, I don't know what that was.
Yeah, so there, there is, there is a sign, I think the sign is here, if I'm not mistaken. This is a wayfinding sign for the supermarket in the back. Has nothing to do with the Burger King application.
Okay.
All right. Comments. We talked about the refuse enclosure, eliminating the sign. And then Duchess County Department of Planning. We received some comments from them on the 14th. And their concerns had to do, first with signage. There was a question about whether or not, why we needed to have, I think, two signs on this tower. And if you go, so there's, there's, there's three of these Burger King round logo signs.
Right.
The first thing I would say, really, there are two issues here. One is visibility. And if I go back to the site plan, I apologize for, might be making everybody dizzy here as I go through this. But so that, those two signs are located here and here. And so as you travel, as you travel south on Winslow Gate Road, you would see the one sign on the side. As you travel north, you would see this sign. You don't necessarily see them both at the same time unless you were right here. But because, you know, this is not just a pedestrian project, there are vehicles. It's important that we have visibility on those two sides. The third sign, which is for the second entrance, is located on the south elevation. And that is, you know, again, it's right over the elevation. So the signs, it's not only tenant ID, but they're typically located where there are entrances. So we do feel that having all three of the round signs are appropriate for this particular project, given the fact that it's, you know, it's really got four sides and can be seen really, you know, they're, they're roadways basically on all four sides of the building. So we feel strongly that that, that that is appropriate. There, again, we took off, we have another comment about the sign on the refuse enclosure, which has been eliminated. There is now some comments on some of the signage related to the drive-through. One comment is, if my, if I understand the comment correctly, that this Burger King logo... I'll just read this. The clearance sign C includes a Burger King logo that appears to be too small to be seen by drivers navigating the drive-through and should be removed. Likewise, the tagline, "The easiest game of limbo ever," is unnecessary and should be eliminated. I think it's, it's, you know, it's not a major building element and the signs, the, the letters are relatively small. I think they're about four inches on this. The whole base of this is about, you know, it's, you know, a little less than seven and a half inches. Honestly, it's not a, it's not a major issue here. I'm, I'm not concerned that this would deter from the streetscape that we're trying to protect, but I will leave that up to you folks to decide. And then likewise, similar comment is that on the menu board, they've got a tagline here, "Flame grilling since 1954." Again, it's on a menu board, you know, these are slightly different. Again, it's not, it's not a big building sign. I don't think it's going to deter from the streetscape. And again, these, these tend to be sort of prototypical equipment elements that, that get incorporated by these national tenants. So again, be, be interested in what you have to say about that. And then we get to, we get to the comment that there are seven tenant poster signs proposed. I've gone through that already and the strategy behind them. So that's why they're there, they're, so there are three along the drive-through, one on this back or east elevation. And there's one here at the main entrance, which is this Whopper sign. And then there are three here on the corner. So again, we're using it to help break the facade up. And the last comment that they have here is that to improve the pedestrian experience aboard could recommend additional windows on the main entrance elevation, drive-through elevations, reducing the large blank walls, which would support better streetscape and pedestrian presence. We agree, but because we can't put windows there just based on the operations within that building, we're proposing these graphics. So I think that addresses all the comments and I'm, I'm all ears.
All right, thanks, Mark. Let me go to Eric first. His recommendation?
Sure. Yep. We broke, as Mark described, we broke the architectural review into two parts. One, the architecture for the building. And then, secondly, the refuse enclosure is really both design and architecture by, because of notes on the site plan that deferred that the structure design to architectural approval rather than as a part of the site plan. So the comments are run accordingly. The, also, as Mark mentioned, the signage, there are no sign regulations. So the board's consideration of signage is, is pretty much limited to, to their appearance or architecture, except for freestanding signs and I, there were not any on this. So it's all building signage. So they, they are not, they can't be approved until there are regulations and then the zoning administrator would review them. However, the board can review them with respect to architectural appearance, not quantity or, or size. Let's see. The, of that. So we have some comments. Staff incorporated some of the comments from the board's previous approach to other buildings at Hudson Heritage. We did take exception, we thought the board might take exception to some of the architectural elements which become themselves signage, like the canopy over the main entrance, where the front of the canopy extends upward to form letters. And if the board agrees, we thought that would look better as, as just a straight canopy like the others. Comment, Mr. Schulman's comment noted about the monument sign not being part of this review that I guess we'll just, maybe that would just be, if that could be noted on, on a future, any future submittal, that it is not for Burger King, that it's identified as a wayfinding sign rather than as part of the Burger King. Otherwise, you have, and then the graphics, I think you've answered that. And we had a comment about HVAC and gas meter screening. That's our comments. Oh, and on the refuse enclosure, I guess you, you answered the question about signs. The refuse looks fine for, for planning purposes. The board can weigh in. We just thought the gates needs, because this is also a design review, we thought the gate design should be detailed further. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Eric. And it's time for architecture. Just say upfront, myself, it's a huge improvement, Mark, on the, on the architecture of the building itself. So I appreciate that work you've done into that. Signs is something else, I guess. There's a lot of signage. You know, what we've done in some other buildings in town is they put faux windows in in places where we needed it to appear like windows. But I think it's up to you guys whether you'd want it to be a faux window or a, or artwork. But I'd just like to make the note myself that I'd like to see the artwork at least in proportion to the buildings on the others, to the windows on the other side. So just like you've shown them here, so we don't have a little, you know, two by two square foot artwork in that. So it at least breaks it up to look correctly.
Right, proportionally, yeah, yeah, correct.
We just go around the board for other people to comment as well. And I think I have a couple others.
Carl, I just, I'll just add one thing. The, 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 well, I guess it is a sign. It's at the right of the main entrance. It's, I think it's on the screen right now. As far as, if that, I have a feeling that when there are sign regu, the sign regulation definitions that apply now make that a sign because it has a message on it. So it, it's not artwork, it's a sign. However, it's, yeah, but the board can comment on it. We think it's a, it might do better just as brick or with more artwork instead of the sign.
Yeah, other areas of town we've, you know, we have not allowed, for example, a big cup on the Dunkin' Donuts and some other things, so.
I, I, yeah, and I, I understand all of that and I appreciate the comments. I, let me just say one thing that I think is important and I think our client would attest to this, is that a lot of these nationals and their prototypes, you know, their prototype is their brand, it's their image. And in a situation like this, where they've lost, you know, they've lost the big red band and they've lost that prototypical look, it is not, it's not as easy to identify this as a Burger King as, as you might, you know, driving down, you know, Route 9 someplace else or another, you know, along some strip mall or something like that. So obviously, we've, we've enhanced the architecture, but to the tenant's concern, we have we've taken away from their, their identification. So so there's a compromise. And I think that that was, that would be the one thing that I would throw out there is that, you know, having the ability to have some graphics and, you know, you know, I'm, I'm very happy we were able to take this red band off and the Burger King agreed to do that. But like I said, it leaves them. It, it's, I think it was a compromise here if there's, if they're allowed to have maybe more graphics or, you know, or, you know, blade signs that sit up on top of the canopy, which I don't think really deter from the architecture or the building. That's my two cents on the, on the signage for Burger King.
All right, thanks. I appreciate that you've, you know, compromising with them.
We're going to be going through this some more as we work on the sign regulations over the next few weeks because we're, we have to get that done, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's at the point where we're trying to create a lot of signs and we've got to have regulations, so.
Yeah.
Because you guys can move forward as much as possible with that. Okay, let me go around the board for additional comments. Peter?
I think that you did, with the use of the, the materials and the, and the design features, I think you did a great job on designing this building. I don't agree with you as far, I, I don't think with those large, round Burger King signs, which are immediately recognizable, that you need a picture of a Whopper on the side of the building. That, that's all I have.
All right. We'll see where the sign code comes out. Go ahead, Ben.
Like the architecture, I think it's a great look. Thanks. As far as the signs go, I don't mind any of them, except the one that's on the canopy that says Flame Grill since 1954. I don't mind. It's not bad on the menu board, but it looks kind of hokey there.
All right.
On that. The rest of them, I'm, I'm even fine with the picture of the Whopper. And I like the art, not, not the faux windows.
All right. Art, yeah, I think art would be better than the faux windows too, in this, in this area where you're trying to make this little Main Street thing that more, the more things you can bring, bring in like that to give it character, the better. Nicole?
Yeah, I think the architecture looks good. I think you'll have to see about the, the signage. I kind of agree with some of my other planning board members here that some of these are, don't really need to be there, like the picture of the burger, flame grilling since, what does that say, 1954 or something like that. I think they're unnecessary and we have to keep in mind that this is a historical area. With that, we need to make sure that we don't inundate these buildings with tons and tons of signs. So that's my two cents.
All right. Thanks, Nicole. Bob?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. The the menu board, I guess that's a picture of canopy D that shows flame grilling over the, yeah, that one. Where is that in the, I don't see it in perspectives one, two, three, or four.
Yeah, it's, it's not in the perspective, but I can show you in plan, so.
Is it standalone somewhere or?
Yeah, it's up here.
Okay.
Yeah.
Where the drive-through lane starts.
Right.
So that, that's the drive-through entrance right there and that's the first thing they see?
Correct. Well, it's not the first thing they see. I mean, it's, when you're driving through, yes, you've got the clearance bar, then you have the, the menu board and then the cars queue in line where they have the pickup window here.
Well, it's the first thing of interest when they're going to decide what to order.
Yes, correct, correct.
Okay. But then on those perspectives, I don't see the flame grilling part of that on, I forget which, was one, two, three, or four that?
Yeah, we, we didn't, we didn't focus on those elements in the perspective. We were really just focused on the architecture of the building.
Okay, so.
As they, they, you know, they're, they're freestanding and sit out here on the site.
I, I mean, I would, I guess I would prefer if they weren't there. And I know your, your story about the, you know, the trademark, but McDonald's up in Hyde Park, they weren't allowed to put the golden arches up. And as far as I know, they're doing okay.
Okay. So you prefer to not have the signage on the menu board, like this, take it, bring it off?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what it adds to it. They're going to be looking at the menu items, not necessarily the sign above it, so. That just, that's just my two cents. That's all I have.
All right, thanks. Bob, Joan?
I think the architecture looks great. I don't really have a big problems with the signs for whatever it's worth. I think the picture of the Whopper is a little odd. But like these drive-through signs, I don't feel like you're going to see them from anywhere other than in your car as you're going through the drive-through. So, you know, in terms of compromising with a national chain, this could be an area where you could give because in the grand scheme of things, I don't see where it's that visually intrusive. So I think overall, you know, I think it looks very nice.
All right, thanks, Joan. Yeah, and as I said, I think my, my biggest sign issue is the, the big Whopper, I think, the pic, the big picture.
I just have a thought.
Other boards, but go ahead, Kristen.
I just have a thought. You know, there, there's some, some imagery, you know, these paintings are pictures of food that Burger King, I guess, would be accustomed to using, but maybe perhaps it might be better to incorporate images of people. Not necessarily people that work there, but, you know, just, just having like a, a human component to that. Just a thought. Not sure if that's part of their branding in some way, but just make it more community oriented and a friendlier welcoming space than just a facade with a picture of a burger on it.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, the art.
Person eating a burger.
I mean, the artwork that we're, you know, that he's displaying is kind of a modern art, splash of color there, but people, whatever, anything is up for grabs for the artwork, but I guess we just don't, you know, our normal sign code, we don't want it to we want all the huge poster, huge billboards to be assigned on the building. So it's yet to be worked out what the sign code is for.
Well, it's good to get this, it's good to get this feedback though, because it will help as we work on the sign code to, you know, understand where we want to draw some lines.
But the building itself looks, I love it, looks great.
Yep.
Did a nice job with that. So I guess some, you know, what do we do as far as approval without the sign code here?
Well, we're not approving the sign. Right, the signs will ultimately fall under the sign code. I think it's pretty clear though that the guidance that we got was, will be helpful. We'll work on that.
Okay, so we could go forward with granting approval, I think, for, for the building.
Right.
So we're approving perspectives one, two, three, and four?
Correct, without the signage.
Without the signage, right.
Right. Like, you know, it was pretty clear that the sign over the canopy, for example, the flame grilling since whenever that was, that that's, you know, we're not going to allow that as part of the architecture. So that's probably going to have to come off. But then, you know, the rest of it, we have to do the sign regulations and we're going to do that.
And I think the, the only condition I would have, like, under the first one, that I would like to see under number six there, would be that the, that the artwork is in proportion to the other windows.
Artwork in proportion to the window.
You know what I mean?
Say that again, Carl.
So that it looks right.
Carl, say that again.
I'd like to see those, you know, the artwork that's thrown on the, on the rendering currently on the screen. It looks, you know, he's, he's created it, Mark has created it in proportion to the windows on the other side of the doorway, so it should be similar proportions. Whatever artwork winds up being there.
Charlie, Eric, just so we understand for the conditions, you're talking about only those two graphic images or you're talking about graphic artwork on all sides of the building?
On, on all sides.
Yeah, you're saying you like the one, the ones that were being shown there, you like those proportions, correct?
Right, I like those proportions, so it's.
But the ones in the back there, not so much?
Uh, well, they're proportional to the drive-through window opening there too, so it's not, you know what I mean?
Yeah. Okay, all right. So, so in those cases, they are proportional and they would be, size-wise anyway, would be okay?
In my view.
In your view? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what it, so we know what the condition means when, when we're asked to sign off on it.
Yep.
Okay.
So there's some, you know, just so you don't see a blank brick wall and with, with just tiny piece of artwork. So it's. All right, go ahead, Nicole.
I move the planning board grant architectural approval for building B Burger King in the outdoor patio area, permanent structures, fencing, installed tables, in accordance with materials presented, subject to the following conditions. One, the proposed canopy overhang of, over the south elevation main, main entrance includes an upper edge with letters rising 16 inches spelling Flame Grilling since 1954 is inconsistent with the other canopy overhangs on the building. Appears unnecessary and should be modified to appear consistent with other canopy overhangs if the board is in agreement. Two, the locations of all artwork or graphics shown on brick walls in rendering shall be artwork or windows and not additional signage, including the Whopper poster right of the main entry. Three, the monument sign southwest of building B shall be deleted or detailed in design or appearance, subject to staff review and approval. Four, show the location.
For that one, we're just going to basically make sure it's a wayfinding sign and we have that indicated.
It wasn't really to Burger King, so.
Okay. Four, show the location of HVAC and gas meters and provide screening, except for the staff. Five, town zoning administrators review. And six, comments of the planning board in meeting, including the following graphic artwork, should be similar to others already shown on the building.
Proportionally, yeah. All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben? Oh, yeah, mute Ben. Might have to step away. Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan? Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
I move the planning board grant design and architectural approval for the refuse enclosure for building B in accordance in materials presented, subject to the following conditions, seven through 10.
Second.
And that, and that includes no signage on the back of the? Okay. Moved and seconded, called to question, all is in favor by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben? Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. If you wouldn't mind unsharing, too?
Yep.
Next up, we have Dutchess Dodge Inventory Parking. An amended site plan for a previously approved plan. Who's on representing Dutchess Dodge today?
It's Bill Polvam.
Oh, hey, Bill.
How are you?
Good. Good. So I gather they went to make some changes, some staging it. Go ahead with the presentation.
I'm trying to share my screen. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Yep, what's up doing now?
Yeah, we're, we're back tonight with an amended site plan application. The applicant, after receiving approval, Duchess Dodge began the process of construction. In doing so, they cleared the trees to get ready for all the grading that was necessary. And when they cleared the trees that were immediately behind the existing parking lot in the area where there was a, I don't know if the board remembers, but there was a house in this area here.
Yep.
And that house was removed as, as part of the site plan. And there was a bunch of trees in the back here that had to be removed for the grading. And when the land clearing occurred in this area, the only thing standing was the original row of pine trees or evergreens that ran up through this area here with my, and then down along the side. I believe there was like forty-seven of them. And they were spaced four and five feet apart and they were actually around thirty feet tall. So when they cleared the rest of the lot, those trees, you could see that a lot of them were just overcrowded and really didn't have any, any greenery on them. So then they started to thin them out. And then when they thinned them out, being that they were so crowded and so tight, they just looked really awkward. So, and I wasn't there at the time, but the owner told the contractor to just remove them because they looked so poorly. So after that was done, I believe the town, part of one of their inspections, had noticed that, which triggered us to respond. Which ultimately was to come back and talk to the planning board about that. And also, in getting the process moving forward, I don't know if the board remembers, but they had a lot of cars in the front on the north side that were moved temporarily in the back for construction. And once, once the site was opened up and the cars were parked, the owner had a better feel for what he actually needed and thought that the overall parking might have been more than he needed at this time. Especially with the pandemic that's going on and, you know, sales are lower. So he might not need to carry as many cars at this point in time anyway. So with that in mind, knowing that we were gonna come back to the planning board, we decided to just amend the site plan and show what we're calling phase one parking, which encompasses the whole front portion of the overall site plan. And then, in this area here is where the stormwater infiltration basin is. And then just cut it off at this point and, and not disturb the back part of this parking lot in what we would call a phase one. Because with the overall site plan, in order to get our completed works, we would have to build out the entire site through the site plan, as you're aware. So the thought again was to come in and try and phase out the, the construction so that we're not disturbing, not building as much in the first part of it. Let him get in there and start using it, knowing that in a very short time, he'd have to make a decision if he's gonna build the back. I believe you have two years to complete it, the overall site plan, once it's done. So that's, that's the rationale to come in for an amended site plan. Like any project, the project, the cost of the overall site plan and the overall parking was a lot higher than what, that, that he originally budgeted for. So that also came into play. It's not, that ultimately didn't make the decision, but it was a, a component to propose the, the phased build-out. And he is prepared to do the full build-out if he finds, you know, he has the cars that are needed to be stored over and beyond what he's showing in phase one. And then lastly, with this plan compared to the overall plan, when we were out there and saw the grades and the overall layout, it made more sense to connect the existing parking lot here. Here's the existing parking lot in here. It made more sense to have the access by this garage to access the phase one storage area versus up in this area where the grade is much steeper. And then that also keeps the, the, the traffic to this area more in the back of their lot and away from the shared driveway on, on the north side. So we're in tonight with the amended site plan application and looking to move forward. I, I will mention that we did show a bunch of evergreen trees on the rear of the, the new parking area. We're not showing any trees in the area where the pine trees were because we wanted to pull the parking lot closer to the rear of the existing parking lot to leave more room in, in this back area. We're actually planting trees and screening as well as making the parking lot appear to function as one. But actually with the plan that we proposed the first time that was approved with the pine trees, the parking itself it seemed isolated. So the owner felt it was more appropriate to bring the parking more forward and have the screening in the back along the property line with Mrs. Korsortis. As the board knows, she had some concerns with the screening to begin with. So I just wanted to add that as well.
All right, that's Bill. I did, did have a quick question on the, you know, that you said that house got demolished. I thought he was talking about turning it into a detail shop, but I guess the condition was bad.
When we first, when we first made application, the house is gonna be converted to an office.
Office, okay.
You know, that would be accessory to the dealership and then the, the garage was gonna be a, a detail shop. But there was some issues with tying in the, the sewer for the, for the detail shop and the treatment that would be involved in that. So he decided to eliminate that proposed idea, use this, the garage for storage, and he's gonna continue to use his detail shop in the main building. And then the house itself, again, because we had to tie the water in the sewer to the meter and then bring the sewer to the front. Given the despair of the house, he chose just to remove it. And that's, that's a change we made towards the end of the, the original site plan application that was approved. So that house is no longer, that's, that's been removed from the site as part of the construction.
All right, thanks Bill. Kristen, what's your take?
Okay, thanks Bill for the overview. He hit on a lot of the, the items that I, you know, I had sort of prepped him on and knew that were forthcoming from the board, but I do think, well, the application is on first and foremost. I, I'm recommending deferral this evening. I thought it would give the board a chance to just hear what the proposed plan was, the, the discuss with the applicant, the idea of phasing, phase one, phase two, what that means, what's incorporated as part of phase one and phase two. Potentially setting an alternative time limit for phase two, because right now it's sort of indefinite from their perspective, but from the town code perspective, we could just say, hey, you have until two years to complete the project and then we just stick with that and the applicant would have to come back in at that time. It allows the board and department to have, you know, keep a pulse on what the proposed phase two would be at some future date. The, obviously, we, you know, Bill walked you through the pine trees discussion and the removal of them. Right now, I guess, at this point, the board would be looking to see if, if what's proposed now on the landscaping plan is sufficient from their perspective. And perhaps one of the more important items is just that we had one member of the public who actually resides at that single-family residence as part of the last round of public comment come forward and had some concerns about screening. So we just wanna understand if, if that stockade fence that was being proposed as part of the previous application is, is, you know, is some of it being built, is, is all of it being built, during which phases it being built? And yeah, that's, that's probably what I've got for you this evening, yeah. And then, yeah, just recommending deferral after your discussion.
Okay, thanks Kristen. I, yeah, I know there's the fence and some trees along the area, I believe, as well, were, were a part of the screening for that residence. So.
Oh, I know that this is gonna come up again. I did reach out to the Arlington Fire Department to confirm that they were okay with the turning template. Unfortunately, I was unable to track the captain down, so I will look to confirm that. And again, it's on for deferral, so we can always confirm that. But I had touched base with Bill, the project engineer, and he had noted that it's the same template that was provided in the previous application. You know, same size vehicle was run through the circulation template, so it shouldn't be a problem. And he didn't flag it in his memo and he's, that's usually one of the first things that he's looking at, in all honesty, so.
Yeah, the equipment is hard to turn around sometimes, so.
Yeah.
Good to be checking. Yep, that was my next. I wasn't gonna forget Don this time. Because I see stormwater ponds here, et cetera, so. You still on the call, Don?
I'm still here. You haven't forgotten me tonight, that's good. Our, our concerns are pretty limited here. We have a couple of concerns about the, the water. There's a, appears to be an outdoor yard hydrant. We just wanted to know what that was for. We, we wanna see the water service line to the old resident if it hasn't already been cut, capped, and abandoned in accordance with our town water department requirements. So we just wanted to make sure that the pavement would be striped, including the existing parking areas.
Okay. As far as the stormwater goes, I see they're still proposing ponds there. So is that sufficient for phase one and does that cover phase two as well, or?
That is, that is the overall pond that was designed for the full build-out. We're proposing to install that as part of phase one.
Okay, so.
So that would be in place.
Yeah, I had a conversation with Andy Lern, also of C T L, and he had acknowledged that based on what's proposed, it really largely wasn't changing and it was sufficient.
Okay, so.
And it's all being taken care of as part of phase one. So if, if, if there is future build-out, it would be able to withstand what is proposed as part of this current plan.
Okay, great. All right, let's go around board for comments done at this point. Peter?
Thanks Carl. As part of Kristen's report here, under site plan review, it's a question really for our town attorney. It reads, "The August twenty nineteen approved and signed site plan documented that there were forty-seven pine trees to remain. As part of the owner-applicant's secret project description for this amended site plan application, it is identified that the forty-seven pine trees were removed because they were dead or in poor health from overcrowded conditions. This action was not submitted for town review or documented as a field change request between the owner-applicant and the town for the previously approved and then signed site plan." So my question for you is, is an applicant under any obligation to contact the town when there is, when there is a substantive change to an approved site plan?
The short answer is yes. The applicant should contact the town. Should have been done prior to removing the trees.
Well, my question isn't should, is it must or should?
Well, Peter, I might be able to better answer that question because we did have a pre-construction meeting, which is a requirement per our site plan approval method. And so they are required to contact the town engineer. And also, we also include me as the staff planner to be able to sign up, review and sign off on field change requests. So in essence, the answer, the answer to your question is yes, they are required and it's documented as part of a pre-construction meeting.
So what's the remedy if, if the applicant does not consult with the town for a site plan change?
The remedy would lie with the enforcement, which would be the building department or the zoning administrator, whether they wanted to, I mean, typically, if the town found out about this, they could issue a stop-work order if there was something like that going on, or they could bring an order to remedy. And one of the possible remedies would be exactly what's going on right now, applying for a revised site plan and getting approval for the current configuration of the lot. Whether there are other penalties that would be associated is something that, that's not a planning board consideration.
Okay, so is there going to be any follow-up with that?
I have not heard one way or the other.
Well, who would advise you one way or the other?
Well, we can, you know, we would look into that, we can look into that, you know, as a follow-up to this discussion. But I think what we would typically do from an enforcement standpoint is, you know, is kind of what we're doing here now with the site plan, which is, okay, what kind of remedy do we want? Do we want them to replant the forty-seven trees? Do we, you know, do we, you know, that's, I think, part of what is up for discussion now. So we're, we're, you know, by coming in for this amended site plan, we're, we're having the opportunity to have that discussion with the applicant.
You know, when I, when I originally heard they removed the forty-seven trees, I was concerned that it was along Neem's Way. And when we originally considered this application, we were concerned about buffering. So then I was relieved to find out that it wasn't along Neem's Way, that it went along a north-south track. And that really didn't concern me because I really didn't interfere with the buffering, so I was okay with that. But now I'm, I'm looking at this and it looks really that removing those forty-seven trees is to the applicant's advantage because now he wants to bring those two parking lots together. If we had an opportunity to actually look at those trees before they were all removed, you know, we wouldn't be having this discussion. And that's, that's really my concern. Because we really have at this point no idea. And like I said, I remember looking at those trees and it didn't seem to me that they were in, in any way in a deteriorated condition, although they might have been. But at least we should, could have had the opportunity to inspect them so that we could go, we, we would have some clarity. And right now, we don't have any. But it doesn't, what concerns me is, when I look at the plan they're proposing now, it really appears to be to the owner's advantage to have removed those forty-seven trees, no matter what condition they were in.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like they were spaced tightly together, so they could have been having issues, but should have been notified.
I can just say one thing. And I, and I wasn't out there when this decision was made between the owner and the contractor. But what I can say is when I went out to this property on a number of occasions, there were a number of trees. I wouldn't say all forty-seven, but there were a number of trees that were definitely in very poor condition or dead. And to put it in perspective, and this is on the original site plan, the spacing was about four or five feet and there were, I'm gonna guess they were at least thirty feet tall. So you know, so, some of the trees- So, you know, so some of the trees, you know, as, as, as you went up the, up the trunk, you know, there was branches, you know, sporadically because each tree may, took its own space. But, you know, with a lot of them dying and everything, they, they, there really wasn't much left to them because, you know, if you picture a thirty-foot-tall pine tree that has two and a half feet to use, where the three next to it has two and a half feet, there's...
Yep, they're just growing into each other.
They just got crowded out. So I just, again, I'm not, I'm not vouching for what they did, but I'm just pointing out the fact, if you do look on the site plan and the spacing, you can see how that could be possible.
Yeah, I get that, Bill, but it also, it also is part of the, the screening that the house in the back, back from Route Nine.
Yep, I understand.
To supplement what Bill stated, and just in an effort to try and move this forward in a, maybe up, you know, towards a remedy approach or just thoughtful thinking, huh, must be getting late. I did do the math, and I think it works out to be that the applicant is now gaining about six parking spaces in this particular area, having removed those trees and just having to reconfigure the site to this. So, I mean, it's not a hundred parking spaces. They are also leaving the back portion of the lot on, you know, I'm all for, you know, less disturbance. So, you know, I think really it's important for the board to take a look at what they're proposing for, you know, new landscaping on the property. Do you feel it's sufficient? And this is why I'm bringing the conversation back again to the stockade fence, you know, is that being proposed? Maybe you wanna, you know, impose that it be proposed as part of phase one to, to help with some of that screening for the single-family residential home in the back there. I know there's a good relationship between the applicant and that particular owner, but, you know, just doing anything to, to help remedy this and move it forward in a positive way. You know, and again, as it was already mentioned, this would in essence be the step that's being taken, coming back full circle. So I, you know, that's, I'll just leave that there for the board.
Or at least a portion of the fence to make sure, you know, you're not, just not seeing that parking lot. All right, continue around the board. Ben?
Well, not to beat a dead horse, but in the same vein of what Peter discussed with the trees, it seems to me like the applicant is here for approval for what they've already done that wasn't approved. Not only the trees, but they, they talked about some other changes they made and already done. So it's futile to talk about them.
Like Kristin said, you go forward.
My only other thing is, there was a thing from the fire department about two condemned buildings that they wanted to take down that weren't safe. Are they still there, or are they gone?
The two buildings in the back are still there. This was brought up during the original site plan application, and the buildings are, are, you know, they're at a point now where, you know, they're inhabitable. But as we pointed out during the last review, they are in a condition that, you know, they could be refurbished, rebuilt, and that would be part of a building permit application. And that's why the applicant chose not to remove those buildings because he believes there's a base there for them to work off of. And I just want to point out one other thing, just for clarity. The only change in the fields that I'm aware of are the removal of the trees. I'm not aware of any other changes that have happened in the field as part of the construction that's been completed to this point.
They talked about moving the parking lot.
Oh, yeah, no, we're, we're proposing, we're proposing to do that with this application, but this parking lot has not been built yet.
Yeah, it's still all just grass and dirt.
All right, this letter I was referring to from the fire department was June 26th. Says these pose health and safety risks and fire hazard, public nuisance, and should be demolished and removed for amended site approval. That's from the fire department.
You know, that could be a conversation to have this time because a year ago, you know, when, when we did, as, as Bill mentioned, we did talk about these buildings. And at that time, the owner, you know, had talked about wanting to get them perhaps renovated and repurposed, and that made sense. And we, we said, fine. But now another year has passed, they're still out there, they're still in deteriorated condition. And I know, you know, the fire department does have a concern about it. So I think, you know, we could ask the applicant to...
Take another look at it.
Take another look at it and let us know one way or another and, and give us some timelines because I'm, I'm pretty sure those can't stay there indefinitely in that condition.
It's got, they've got to be continuing to deteriorate.
Yes, right, exactly.
All right, thanks, Ben.
Yeah, that's all I have to say.
Nicole?
Yep, the only other thing that I had that wasn't stated yet was the water department is looking for that backflow prevention. It's due, it expired in October of last year. So that's something you guys need to get done and then give the certification to the water department. I just want to kind of say also that I, I'm also with my planning board members here that, you know, some landscaping has to be put back where those trees were taken down. That was kind of subject of approval for last time, and it was kind of just done without approval. We understand it's his property and everything, but, you know, some type of landscaping has to be put back. So I don't know exactly what you want to do there, but something will have to be remedied there. So that's it.
All right, thanks, Nicole. Bob?
Yeah, I'd just like to second the comments on landscaping and trees. I agree with what was made previously. And other than that, I don't have any, anything else to add.
Joan?
Does the applicant have any idea, if two years is not enough time to complete the entire project, is there a time that they're thinking to propose? I know it, it looks like we would defer to something to be worked out between staff and the applicant, but is there a, a, a number that you're thinking to have the whole thing completed, or at least to request to have to complete it?
Ultimately, the applicant was looking to have a couple of years to see how this functions, you know, going through different, different sales cycles. You know, so if you had to ask me a time, his preference, when we started talking about this, was probably, you know, a three-year time period.
Three year, did you say?
Yeah, three years. You know, that would give him two years...
For phase one?
To see how this thing functions and determine whether or not it makes sense to build that back part. But if it, he could work within the two-year time period that I guess would be in place at this point, if I'm understanding that correctly.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't necessarily, I don't have an objection to phasing it out. I was just wondering, you know, how far out the applicant was considering. And also, you know, I'm in favor of replacing the trees. And also that if it does get phased out, that the stockade fence be part of phase one.
Now, with this particular plan, we are proposing the stockade fence along the southern property line, along the back of this new phase one parking area, and then up to the disturbance line. So is the question...
That would be part of phase one?
That would, that's what we're proposing as part of phase one. So is, I guess my question is, is that, would that be acceptable to the board as, as we have it shown, or would we need to continue it into the undisturbed area all the way to the back of the lot? We tried to bring it back so that, you know, it was far enough where that would really be in the line of sight for Mrs. Korsortis. So I would just be looking for some clarification on that.
Well, the house is way over to the west, right? So that's, right, yeah, so...
You might have to extend it a little bit more.
Yeah, her view would be directly into, you know, the area that's disturbed pretty, you know...
Yeah, especially if this could be a phase one and that's it. Like, this would really be the only chance to create that buffer for that neighbor.
Exactly.
Okay, we can bring that back for sure.
Okay.
It doesn't have to, doesn't have to go all the way back because if it's undisturbed there, but just draw, you know, draw a straight line.
Well, as it was shown on the previously approved plan, I think is appropriate, yeah.
Okay.
I guess it's a question of whether the neighbor would want to look at a fence or whether, I don't know what that is, if it's just a field or something.
It's just an open, yeah, it's an open grass field at the moment.
Well, it was more than, it was more than just a fence, though. In the original site plan, there's a fence, and then there's landscaping as well. There's, and so maybe both of those things, you know, would...
Well, could we, could we mitigate some of the trees in the front and bring those trees all the way back here as part of phase one? Would that, would that help the situation?
Possibly, I think we would want to look at it.
Something to discuss. And if, if you draw, if you see where your, as far back as your parking goes is where the, is what she, she could see cars there. So if you're trying to block her view of cars, you draw a straight line from the house to the, to the, to the far parking lot, and you'll see how far back the fence would have to go, perhaps.
Right, and then what we can do is bring back some of the evergreen trees, you know, to soften, soften the view as well.
Yep. All right, you get the idea, Bill, so...
Yep.
To make sure it's, she's protected because she, she now has a view right into the Dusterstodge parking lot, I believe, with those forty-seven trees going.
And keep in mind, you know, there were already cars parked way back up into that field. I mean, I was there, when I was there the other day, I couldn't tell for sure exactly where, you know, that it lined up with this plan, but they were parked way, way in the back.
Yeah, they, they parked them temporarily to do the construction because they had a, they had to pull them out of the front. I don't know if you remember, but as part of the, the comments with the previous plan, there was quite a number of vehicles parked on the north side of the building...
Yep.
Towards the Texas Roadhouse. And what they did was they moved them into this area where we're showing...
Yeah, it was very crowded there.
And then they, then when they started clearing and the work on phase, the area which is now shown as phase one, they moved them back there temporarily to do the work.
All right, you get the idea, Bob?
Well, I think Joan has, has the right idea. I mean, we, since we're not there every day, we don't see what they're doing because that's way in the back off the road. I think we should try to protect that woman's house as much as we possibly can.
And we, we can propose to, especially in the area that would be in phase two, that we're not going to disturb. I think that's some, an area where he can put the trees in and right in the beginning.
Yep, but...
Hey, Carl, this is Eric Holman. I'm just gonna suggest also that the phasing plan you're looking at, it's really a grading and erosion control plan. And so when, you know, when, when Bill implements the ideas that you've discussed, he should give you a phase one plan that shows you what it's gonna look like if he never does phase two, so that you're able to, that, you know, the effectiveness of what you're asking him to do for phase one.
Well, that's, that's what this plan is here. This is phase one. This is what you'll see for phase one. I could show you the overall if you want me to bring that on the screen.
Bill, we got it.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's just we don't, and if he never has to build phase two, that's all the better. We don't, don't want to build something he doesn't need. Don't want to build, you know, disturb land if it's not needed to be disturbed, so, but we want to make sure the screening happens, some, some of the screening happens for that neighbor.
Yep.
All right, I guess we're ready to move forward with an action, with a motion?
I move that the planning board defer action and direct the applicant to respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies included but not limited to the following, one through eight.
Does that include tonight's comments?
It does.
Okay, great. Thanks. Let's see, seconded?
Seconded.
Okay, moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. All right.
Okay, thanks.
See you next time, Bill.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take care of that.
Next up, we have a, just a time extension for Camelot Mobile Home Park, Camelot Village. Anything to say about it, Kristin?
No.
All right, I move that the planning board grant two ninety-day time extensions for the Camelot Village Mobile Home Park application, moving the expiration date from September nineteenth, two thousand twenty, to March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor, by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. Last on the agenda tonight is a zoning text amendment for McDonald Heights Town Center for District MHC. Mike, you want to...
Yeah, just briefly, July, earlier this month, July eighth, the town board adopted a resolution which referred these proposed zoning amendments that we worked on cooperatively with the applicant for Eastdale Village. They referred, the town board referred it to the planning board for a recommendation, so that's what this is about. Really, we've known for quite a long time that the, the Eastdale Village project has, you know, a very unique and very attractive vision for both the architecture and signage. And that, you know, a lot of what's been proposed is not currently allowed under the code. The, the MHC district is lumped in with a number of other districts in our zoning code and has, you know, some, some regulations that are in place there. So we felt that taking it out of that section and creating a new section specific to the MHC district makes sense. And this will, you know, hopefully also avoid what, you know, the situation that we had this past month with the ZVA where we had four different sign variance applications that were on the agenda. You know, that's not really the, the process that we would prefer. We would prefer to have the...
The code right.
The code right. And so, so the code is, you know, again, it's been proposed before the town board, and we're looking for a recommendation back to the town board. They are doing a public hearing on this, I believe it's August fifth. Yes, August fifth.
All right. Guess we'll just go around the board for some comments, if anybody has. Joan?
I don't have any comments. I don't know if it's because it's late, but I don't have any comments at this time.
All right, Bob?
I don't have any comments.
Nicole?
Not at this time.
Ben?
No comment.
And Peter?
My only comment is, you know, there, there are a lot of good signage ideas that are coming out of Eastdale. And I just hate to see them restricted. In, in other words, if there are, people have businesses in other, other, other designated zones, that they should not be prohibited from using some of the, the great ideas that they're, they're coming up at, at Eastdale. And with no, at no extra charge for Jeff Kane either, by the way.
Yeah, well, I think that's one of the things we would like to do is, you know, as, as this goes into place and we see how these work, also from the zoning administrator's standpoint, you know, maybe this becomes a bit of a model for some of the other areas in the town as well.
I could certainly see working at someplace like ATC.
Right.
And we got the new Raymond Elementary School coming online, and that, maybe we'll use some of that.
Yep.
So we should look into that as well, but...
Mr. Chairman, if it's, if it'd be appropriate to make a comment, I'd, I'd like to share something with, with the board on this.
Sure, if you're still hanging in there, Jeff.
I am. You know, the, and we're working with, with staff has been great on this, and I, and they, you know, Mr. Finelli said it right, the flexibility is really key here because to look like a, a town center, you need different signs, you need... to look like a, a town center, you need different signs, you need, you need variability, you need the character of each of the uses to shine through. And, um, and I think we've, I think what's, what's, what's here is, uh, is, uh, is, uh, is a, is a great improvement over where we were. There's one piece that we'd like you to consider changing, and I, and I, you know, one of the, one of the things that we went through in discussing this was, well, what, show us some examples of how what we're talking about actually looks in some buildings, and I can show those to you if you want to look. But, but the one change in, we're asking for is in Section B1A, it limits each tenant to only one sign per elevation. And, you know, sometimes in the, in the context, and it's, it's hard following the Burger King presentation to then talk about Eastdale. I don't mean to, to, to talk badly about, about Burger King, I think that's a, it's a great-looking Burger King, but it's not what we're doing here. And so you, maybe you don't want, you know, one, one of a Burger King sign for elevation. But there are opportunities here where you might have a small, and we're talking, you know, 10, 12, 15 foot square foot wooden hand-curb sign, um, and then another wall sign, which is a five-square-foot sign next to the door, uh, that identifies it. And, and part of it is because we're appealing both to, you know, somebody standing across the street looking at a store, and then somebody standing next to the store, and you got some drive-through traffic, sure, but that's some drive-by, not drive-through, drive-by traffic that appealing to. But that, that, that one change, we think, would give us the flexibility to not, to, to do what we think is, uh, it could be best for this, uh, for this site. Again, I can show you some examples, but I know it's late, so I don't want to take more of your time on that unless you'd like to come up with.
So you're suggesting a maximum of two? Or you're looking for?
Sure, I can't, actually, I can't, I can't, I can't see where we need more than two.
Now, what's the feeling of members of the board on, on that change? Anybody have any comments, one way or the other?
So, if I can just speak to the issue, I don't have an opinion one way or the other, but if the board was amenable to the idea, it would save the applicant a trip to the zoning board.
Yep.
Alternately, they would, you know, we, in, like, in Arlington, for example, if an applicant wants two signs that comprise the total signage but split up on two signs where they're only allowed one, it requires them to go to the ZVA for a variance. So, the, you know, and under Jeff's, um, iteration, it doesn't require a trip to the ZVA. If it stays as is and an applicant wanted two signs as Jeff described, then they would need to go to the ZVA for a variance.
I mean, in general, we want to minimize over signage, but.
Right, but we don't have to eliminate necessarily every.
But we don't, yes, exactly. Um, what's your feeling?
I think it's also a, a question of quality and design.
Right, yeah.
Not just the, the number of signs, but the, the quality and design.
Mm-hmm, which, I know Eastdale's pretty good on the quality, so.
Right.
Yes.
I mean, if you limit the total number of, the total square footage of signage on a building facade and allow the applicant the freedom to, you know, break it up as they may see fit, that's another option.
Well, in a way, we've done that because the sign, the total square footage of signage on an elevation and, and in the proposed code is, is proportional to the side, the linear feet of the building. So, so it is limited.
You've done that already.
Yeah.
Okay, so then, if we change this to maximum of two per tenant, then if they wanted three, they'd have to go for variance, but. But, uh, anybody, general to change that to two, maximum of two?
As a ZVA attorney, I'd like a lighter ZVA docket.
Yeah, you get out earlier.
They get off too easy most months, come on.
I don't have an objection. I think that it's kind of a, I'm sure, uh, the applicant's appearance here is just fortuitous, but it is nice to kind of get a real-world application of what's a possible change here. So I don't have an objection to it.
All right.
I don't.
All right, it doesn't sound like, uh, think, sounds like we're amenable to your proposal here, Jeff, to, we'll change it to, change it to two in the wording.
Well, we'll make that recommendation back to the town board, obviously. The town board will make the decision.
Exactly. For our recommendations. All right, I move that we convey a positive recommendation to the town board regarding the adoption of the proposed zoning text amendment with the change of, of B1A to a maximum of two signs per tenant, per building.
Second.
Elevation is. Moved and seconded, call to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes six to zero. Is there any other business before the board tonight? Anyone have anything? Seeing none, I move we terminate the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question, all is in favor. Nobody in favor of terminating?
Aye.
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 All right, any opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Good night, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.